Today, on December 11th, we're glad to have you here. And I'm going to call this meeting to order. And members of the public wishing to address the City Council on items appearing on this agenda are advised to indicate their interest in doing so by submitting a speaker card to city staff or proceeding to the podium one by one at the time an item is considered. Members of the public wishing to address the City Council on items not appearing on this agenda may do so during Item 6. Each speaker will have the opportunity to speak for up to three minutes once an agenda item otherwise allowed by the City Council. Speakers are requested but not required to identify themselves, both on any applicable speaker cards and in comments or testimony. Speakers are advised that their names and any information submitted on speaker cards or otherwise provided in writing to the city may be disclosed or become a matter of public record. No speaker should expect privacy of such information. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, pro tem Horn. Councilmember Connors, Councilmember McCary.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Mayor, pro tem Horn.
Here.
All present.
Okay, and will Councilmember Connors please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. Thank you all, and we now come to City Council business. And the first item is the general municipal election, and so we'll be adopting a resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on November 5th, 2024, and declaring the results in such other matters as required by California Elections Code Section 10263, 10264, and 10265. And the City Clerk will present a certificate of election to Cynthia Connors, Sheri Horn, and Pearl Lee. And the City Clerk will administer the oath of office prescribed in the California Constitution to Cynthia Connors, Sheri Horn, and Pearl Lee. And then we'll recess for five minutes to take photos. So...
So my recommendation would be that you first vote on the resolution. So you need a motion and a second for that.
I still need the resolution.
Thank you. Do we need a vote, all in favor?
Yes.
I... Okay.
All right, that's unanimous, for the record. All right, and then we're going to do the certificates of election and the oaths of office, one at a time. So we're going to start alphabetically with Cynthia Connors. If you would walk down to the podium, the City Clerk will take it from here.
Congratulations, Mrs. Connors.
We should turn the other way. We should turn towards the podium. This is called grip and grin. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
And then you'll stay at the podium for the oath.
Congratulations to Cynthia S. Connors, and we will now recite the oath of office. If you could repeat after me.
You want me to just read it, since it's here?
We'll repeat.
Okay.
"I, Cynthia S. Connors..."
"I, Cynthia S. Connors..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States..."
"...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...against all enemies, foreign and domestic..."
"...against all enemies, foreign and domestic..."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance..."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance..."
"...to the Constitution of the United States..."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...that I take this obligation freely..."
"...that I take this obligation freely..."
"...without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion..."
"...without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion..."
"...and that I will well and faithfully discharge..."
"...and that I will well and faithfully discharge..."
"...the duties upon which I am about to enter..."
"...the duties of the office upon which I am about to enter."
Thank you.
So help me, God.
And then you'll go ahead and complete the form in front of you.
Congratulations to Sheri L. Horn, and we will now recite the oath of office. "I, Sheri L. Horn, do solemnly affirm..."
"I, Sheri L. Horn, do solemnly affirm..."
"...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States..."
"...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...against all enemies, foreign and domestic..."
"...against all enemies, foreign and domestic..."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance..."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance..."
"...to the Constitution of the United States..."
"...to the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...and that I take this obligation freely..."
"...and that I take this obligation freely..."
"...without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion..."
"...without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion..."
"...and that I will well and faithfully discharge..."
"...and that I will well and faithfully discharge..."
"...the duties upon which I am about to enter..."
"...the duties upon which I am about to enter."
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I'll give it back to you after I scan.
Next up is Pearl Lee.
We will now recite the oath of office. "I, Pearl Lee, do solemnly swear..."
"I, Pearl Lee, solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support and defend..."
"...and I will support and defend..."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"...Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...against all enemies, foreign and domestic..."
"...against all enemies, foreign and domestic..."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance..."
"...that I will bear true faith and..."
Allegiance.
"...allegiance..."
"...to the Constitution of the United States..."
"...to the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...that I take this obligation freely..."
"...that I take this obligation freely..."
"...without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion..."
"...without any mental reservation..." "...or purpose of evasion..."
"...and that I will well and faithfully discharge..."
"...and that I will well and faithfully discharge..."
"...the duties upon which I am about to enter..."
"...the duties upon which I am about to enter."
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we were going to take a recess.
Yeah.
Sheriff Pro Tem. Yes.
I nominate Councilmember Horn to serve as mayor.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I would like to appoint Councilmember Annie McCary as my mayor pro tem.
I accept.
Thank you.
I got the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
That was quick.
Yeah, okay. There's no presentations or ceremonial matters, so we come to... But we come to, I want to say something. But this... This should be, I'm very excited about this year. As you see, we're an all-female council. We have a terrific staff. We have one of the longest-serving city managers in Orange County, and our whole staff, I'm not going to name every single person, because I'll probably forget somebody, but they do so much for us all year long, and they've kept us all on track. Yoli and our treasurer, Liz Torres, and everybody that does everything here works so hard with the residents and for the residents. And I get so many compliments on when people come and deal with City Hall. They get a very positive response, so I'm very grateful for the staff that we have. We're starting out the year with no liabilities, no pension liabilities, and with money in the bank, and a great mobility program, so I think that we see a lot good will come this year. We're going to focus locally, and not let some havoc that's going on in other places affect the city. We're just going to think about the city and do the best for our residents here. So I'm glad you're all here today, and I'm glad we're all reorganized. So with that, now we come to public comments on non-agenda items. This is the time and place for members of the public to address the City Council on items not appearing on this agenda. Pursuant to state law, the City Council is unable to take action on such items, but may ask clarifying questions of the speaker, engage in brief discussion, refer items to city staff, and/or schedule items for consideration at future meetings. Is there any member of the public that would like to say anything? No? Okay, seeing none, public comments is closed, and the City Treasurer's report will be provided at our next regular meeting on December 18th. So we come to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the City Council or city staff requests that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and consideration of action. Members of the public may address the City Council on items appearing on the consent calendar, regardless of whether an item is removed for separate discussion and consideration of action. Can I get a motion on the consent calendar?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along, yes, there are no public hearings today, so we come to our city reports and comments, which for some of us may be the last report on this committee. So first up is Coastal Green Belt, Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We met last month, and that report was given at last month's meeting, so there's no new report for the Green Belt Authority.
Orange County Fire Authority, there'll be no report because it's vacant right this moment. Orange County Library Advisory Board, Councilmember Moore.
There is no report. We didn't have a meeting.
Thank you. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District, I do have a short report with some pictures. Here we go. This is a small bag of mosquito bits. It fits in your hand. You'll see how its size relates when there's other pictures, but it's very inexpensive, and it's from Home Depot, and it's made of nothing toxic. They even put it in horses' water troughs and pets. It's okay for pets, but it will keep the mosquito larvae from forming. If you just throw a few pellets in somebody's water saucer, so if around your house, you can put these little pellets in saucers that are around you, because mosquitoes don't fly that far, three or four miles. And you can see how the little pellets are in the large saucers that the mutual puts out. You can't tip and toss the water out of those saucers. So if you throw some of those pellets in there, it should stop the larvae from forming. If you do that once a month or every two weeks, it should keep mosquitoes from right around you from being too bad. The drains that we have, you can see the vector inspector had a little dropper, and when he put it in there, there were mosquitoes squirming around all over in there, so they were actively breeding. And you just put them in everybody's tray. You know, let's say you're in a three-story building, you can put them in there. You can drop them in all the open drains that we have in the landscaping and around your garages, because water collects in there and is still, and there's mosquito breeding. So until our sterile insect technology program becomes widespread all over Orange County, this is a great way to protect yourselves and your neighbors, and inexpensively.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sure.
When you put that in there, do those dissolve, or what happens?
They do dissolve in the water after a while, and they last about two weeks, and they disrupt the breeding cycle.
And you can just pour the water. It's not contaminated now, because there's nothing in there that's...
Right, right. It's made of something, corn cobs and some other things that are in there, that, natural products that...
Okay.
So, okay, and that's the report I have from Vector Control. And so we get to San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corridor Agency, Councilmember Connors.
There has been no meeting so far. There will be a meeting tomorrow, and I'll report a meeting.
Okay. Councilmember Moore, South Orange County Watershed Management.
And we're not meeting. We didn't have a meeting either.
Thank you. Okay, Liaisons to Laguna Woods Community Bridge Builders.
I'll give that report.
Okay, I'll give that report, and we have pictures. This was an amazing event. This was so much what community bridge builders does as its mission. We had dancers from like seven or eight different countries, and they all started rehearsing individually in their little groups. But by the end of, by the time it was time for the production, they were all dancing together. And that's what we want to do, is not just eat someone's food or visit their club, but get to know people themselves and work together and play together. And it was a wonderful event for that. You can see the Chinese and the Korean dancers. There were Iranian and Israeli dancers, and Latin dancers, and Indian. It was just beautiful, and all their... Joel Goldstein took these photos, I want to make sure to say that, and it was just a beautiful thing. And at the end, after each group danced, they all got together. That's why they're wearing these little funny caps at the end, because all the dancers put them on, and they were all dancing together. So it was wonderful, and there were foods also. There's no pictures of the food, but from China, we had chicken skewers, and from India was samosas, and Iran brought the stuffed grape leaves, the dolma. Israel brought borekas. Korea had tofu patties and duck baki? I'm probably pronouncing that wrong, I'm sorry. And tamales from Mexico. And it was, as you can see, a lovely affair. On stage there were some of the trainers of the dancers, and there they are, and their caps with everybody there. And the rest is, there was a big dance afterwards, and so everyone had a great time and made a lot of new friends, so it was a wonderful event, and that's my report. Thank you. And now...
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
First, I want to respond to this particular event. Here in the village, we tend often to present cultural programs that everybody comes to appreciate and enjoy, and we tend to learn about the different cultural groups. But I think carrying it the next step further, to have people at these multicultural events actually get together and work side by side and talk to each other and spend a little time with each other and become more integrated, I think is the next step, and I'm really glad to see that happening. I also want to report, a number of us went to the League of Cities Regional Meeting this week, where we had a presentation on public safety by Sheriff Don Barnes and the Chief of Police of the City of Orange. And the League mentioned their fire insurance working group, which is an important thing for this city, because our fire insurance is almost unreachable for our mutuals and for many individuals. So the League is working on that, and I think that's an important thing to be happening. And also, I just want to say, although it doesn't affect our community directly, Sheriff Barnes spoke about his work at the jail and the magnitude of the mental health program there and the addiction recovery program there, and gave every indication that the Orange County Jail is not just a punitive custodial facility, but it's really a rehabilitation facility. And he said, "You come into my jail, I'm going to dust you off and put you back on your feet and equip you to leave the jail in good condition." And so I think that is, assuming that that's what he's doing, and even if it's only lip service, I think it's a laudable goal, and I appreciate that. So I just wanted to report on that meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. I know that Councilmember McCary and Moore also attended that conference. Would you like to say anything?
Yes, I will make a comment. There are a couple of things. One of them is, you've probably been reading about closing of the juvenile halls, which I spoke to one of the Pearl people, and the juvenile halls were not a good situation of putting children together in a mass situation. They were separated from their families. This is a very positive change, too, even though it's the closing of those. It's a new way of handling things, and that, I think there's a lot of evidence that wasn't really productive. One thing that I mentioned and I had a concern with is that the FBI changed the reporting of their crime, which I think, I think you spoke to that. Would you mind mentioning that, how they changed that? Because the reason I'm bringing it up, POP 36 was passed with 68% I think approval rating, and there's going to be a comparison. People are going to look and say, you know, was POP 36 successful or unsuccessful? But these are some of the challenges in trying to match and compare what happened. Would you mind commenting on that?
Sure, absolutely. So the FBI is now going to the NIBRAS model, which is National Incident Based Reporting, which means that in the old uniform crime reporting, they would always take the highest crime associated to that incident. And if there was several crimes involved, they would always take the higher crime, and that's the crime that we would report. As opposed to the new model, every crime that was associated that happened in that incident will get reported. So yes, it'll look like there's a lot more crime occurring, because every single crime will get reported, but this is standardized, and this is the expectations of the FBI going forward.
So I think we need to keep that in mind when we're hearing the new data, because I think that could be confusing for people and not understanding how we're looking at two different topics. I appreciate your doing that. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
McCary, would you like to say anything?
I think in addition to what has already been said, one of my takeaways came about when they were talking about the capture of the person that did the shooting of the health executor with the camera surveillance and how important that surveillance was in capturing criminals, and how important it is for... They didn't say how important it is, but they highlighted the importance of having surveillance cameras throughout the city, not so much to spy on people, but to be able to access critical information when a crime does occur. And these criminals are in our public streets, and they go through our public street signals wherever they are in public. If there were these surveillance cameras, they have the ability to quickly apprehend the victims, like they did, the perpetrators, like they did in New York, and someone, because the picture was so publicly available, someone just happened to recognize the photo. And so they just highlighted the significance of having that kind of surveillance in the cities.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other comments on any other reports anyone would like to make? Okay. Then we'll go on to City Council business. The City Council meeting schedule. We want to approve a new City Council meeting schedule for January 25 through January 26.
I thought we did that.
I can make some quick comments on this item. So the council right now has established a meeting schedule through June of 2025, so this takes it for another year beyond that through June of 2026. It's the standard third Wednesday meeting schedule, with the exception of we had added some meetings previously in May and June of 2025 related to the budget process. Those meetings are still on the schedule. We are recommending canceling a meeting, an extra meeting that had been scheduled on June 11. We think we'll be fine with just the June 18 and June 25 meetings in 2025. Other than that, it's the third Wednesday thereafter. I did want to note that we did screen it for conflicts versus the CJPIA Conference, the League Conference, and the Calafco Conference in 2025. We had some conflicts this year with that scheduling. There are no conflicts in 2025, so we should be able to maintain the regular meeting schedule. This would just require a motion and a second to approve it through June of 2026.
So I so move?
Thank you. A second?
I second.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So now is the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority Board of Directors. We want to appoint someone of City Council to serve as director and alternate on the Joint Powers Insurance Board. And right now, we have Councilmember McCary is the primary, and the first alternate is vacant.
I would like to be the alternate.
Okay.
Do you meet, by the way?
The meetings are monthly, but we're not required to attend, so I get the minutes of every meeting. We do go to the annual meeting.
Okay, are those ever zoomed or not?
No.
No, they're not.
Yeah.
And then where are they held, by the way? I'm sorry.
The one meeting that I attend, the annual meeting, is in La Palma.
Okay. So the monthlies are in La Palma?
Actually, the monthly meetings are the executive committee, aren't they?
Yeah, the board, the board gets meeting minutes for the executive committee meetings. The board itself only meets annually.
Okay.
And that one meeting in the summer, and then you'll get other correspondence from JPA.
Okay, okay. That's fine, thanks.
So did you want to stay primary?
Yes, I'd love to stay.
Okay.
Yes, so you'll vote on each, and so it sounds like if there's agreement, that would be to appoint Councilmember McCary as the director and Councilmember Moore as the alternate.
I so move.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Coastal Green Belt Authority. We want to appoint somebody, and right now, Councilmember, Pro Tem McCary, excuse me, is the primary, and I and Cynthia Connors are the alternates. I don't want to be alternate again for Coastal Green Belt, so Councilmember, Pro Tem McCary, do you want to stay primary?
I can stay primary on that Green Belt.
Thank you. Great, thank you, Pearl. She'll be first alternate.
I'll continue as third.
You'll continue as third. Okay, great.
Okay, so that would be to appoint Councilmember McCary as the director, Councilmember Lee as the first alternate, and Councilmember Connors as the second alternate.
Okay, so we get to the...
Need a motion, sorry.
Excuse me?
I so move.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The Orange County Fire Authority Board of Directors' appointment. This one is vacant right now, and because Noel Hatch resigned, and I would like to put my hat in the ring for the Fire Authority.
Could I make a comment on this one? This one is a little bit more complicated. When Noel, Noel was the, had this position since I've been on the board, and when we, when a decision was made to add the, an additional fire station, we, the former city attorney, who was Dave Conklin, he, he was emphatic that Noel could not attend any of the meetings. He couldn't just recuse himself, he actually couldn't be in the room. And so I think we had only two meetings, but that really caught my attention, that how important it was that the, sitting on boards, that we'd not have any conflicts, and the public has a need to understand there is no conflict and shouldn't even have the appearance of it. Noel was, Noel's, because he served on the board and he also received a stipend, I believe that played into the situation, but it was, was pretty emphatic that Noel couldn't even be in the room. And then, and then later, when I took the ethics course, and we've all taken it, and we do that, with the ethics course, it states that things may be legal, but that doesn't mean that they're ethical. That ethical means that you have to make decisions. You have, you can't have the appearance of doing anything that would influence, you didn't receive anything, you didn't do anything that would give the public any feeling that anything we're doing is inappropriate. Well, then, there was a problem. In the spring, we, I, and I'm sure every other person up here, received an email, and the email was from the Orange County Fire Authority Union, and that person wanted to meet privately. And so I responded, and I included our city manager, and I said that I did not meet privately with people, that any meeting that I would have would be open and it would be noticed. Well, the person then responded back and said that, you know, you could bring people to the meeting. It's not bringing people to the meeting, it's being open that everyone sees it, that I'm not meeting with them, that anything they have to say, and I appreciate if they have something to say, they can come to our meeting, we support the Fire Authority. Good grief. So at any rate, there was that issue. Then there was the election. When the election came along, there was definitely issues. And the issues next to us in the city of Irvine, there was money. There were, the same issues occurred in the city of Placentia, even though they have no station in the city of Placentia. Then, LAFCO, I serve on LAFCO, and the attorney for LAFCO brought up and put on the agenda the Levine Act, and he went over it. And we talked about and discussed it there, that you should not receive any, any payment for your, for election, nor election materials, and serve on the board, that that is a conflict. And I, too, see it that way. I also contacted our city manager about this, and I would, I think that it would be in our best interest for the city to have something that states very clearly what our position is on ethics and how we treat that. And I think it should be on an agenda, it's something that we want to discuss. So my concern is that I don't think that we should volunteer to serve on the board of any organization if we received any benefit, and that could be money towards a campaign or any even campaign materials, because now there's a conflict. So there's my statement on that.
I'd like to make a comment.
I would like you to.
I recognize that it's important that all of our business be conducted transparently. But I have to say that people from the city, our residents, contact me and ask me about an issue that they have with the city, and I discuss it with them, and then I come to see staff and see if it can be resolved. I think anybody who has an issue with the city is entitled to approach a council member, and I have confidence in my colleagues that if they meet with somebody, that they will disclose it as appropriate and that they will make their decisions fairly and transparently. So that having been said, the next issue is campaign contributions. Within this city, we have a limit of $250 in campaign, the amount of contribution that can be made by any individual or organization. And I don't think anybody on this council is going to sell their vote for $250. I got an offer from the Fire Authority to make a donation in that amount to my campaign for reelection. And because of, because I was alert to this issue, that whoever serves on the Fire Authority Board is management, they are the employers, and the firemen's union is labor. So there is an inherent conflict there. And anticipating that Noel was going to be leaving that position and that it would be open, I contacted our, our California Fair Political Practices Commission and asked them if it was appropriate to receive a contribution from the firefighters if there was a potential that I might serve as a director of the Orange County Fire Authority. And I waited until I heard from them that there was no ethical impediment to receiving such a contribution before I responded to the firefighters. So the question is, certainly it's not legally improper. Our state ethics board says it's not ethically improper. And if there is a perception that somehow somebody is selling their vote because they took a contribution from the firefighters, I guess we'll just have to rely on our individual integrity to withstand that. So I nominate Mayor Horn to serve on the board of the Fire Authority.
Thank you. And for the record, I never got a dime from the Fire Authority. We, there are stipends from Vector, too, and I, no one has ever given us, we got no donations from any company or corporation to our elections, to ours. We just don't do that in this city. So is there a second?
Could I comment, though? I did receive campaign materials, and your names were on the, on the mailer from the Fire Authority. So I did receive that, and I think other people did, too.
I didn't. Did you?
I don't remember.
I'll leave it to our city attorney.
I can just speak to, if it's under $250 or under, that's not a legal financial conflict under either the Levine Act, and that's, the Laguna Woods municipal code has had that limit long before the Levine Act applied to municipal officers.
Great. So do I have a second?
I have a second, but I also have a comment.
Okay.
Related to Councilmember Moore. And I definitely understand your position in terms of whether it may or may not be legal, there is that perception that there may be some impropriety. So I do get that. And I also get that I trust, you know, our Councilmember Connors and Horn for, for their integrity. So I do believe them, but I certainly appreciate you bringing up the fact that this could be something that even though on the books it's legal, it could be the perception that we, that...
I'm not questioning their integrity nor their capabilities, and I think they're even conscientious. The issue for me is that there is that appearance, and I just don't, not to serve on a board, I have a problem with it. Thank you. Thank you for understanding my position.
And just to clarify the motion on this one, because there is a resolution attached to this unlike the others, it would be to appoint Mayor Horn to serve as a director on the Orange County Fire Authority Board of Directors from December 11th, 2024 through December 31st, 2026, by adopting a resolution titled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Repealing Resolution Number 22-65 and Designating and Appointing a Director to Serve on the Orange County Fire Authority Board of Directors from December 11th, 2024 through December 31st, 2026."
Okay, we have a move and a second. Do I, let's have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain.
Okay. So we come to the Orange County Library Advisory Board, and right now, Councilmember Moore is primary, and Councilmember, Pro Tem McCary, it'll take me a while to get used to that, I'm sorry, is the secondary, is the alternate.
Want to continue?
I'll continue. Thank you.
McCary wants to continue as primary.
Okay.
And I'm okay with second.
You're okay with it. Okay, so for the Orange County Library Board, Councilmember Moore will remain the primary, and Mayor Pro Tem McCary will be the first alternate.
I move the selection of those councilmembers to serve on those committees.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Okay, Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control Board. We need to appoint a representative to serve as trustee on the Orange County Mosquito. I was the primary, but since I'm moving to fire, that will be an open place. Would anyone like to serve?
Wait a minute, you're not going to do it?
No, I'm going to serve on fire.
Oh, good. I thought, okay, thank you. I thought you said it would be an open place, and you weren't going to do it. I misunderstood.
No, Vector will be an open place.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I nominate Councilmember Lee to serve for, for Vector.
Great. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Councilmember. Okay. Lee and the San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corridor Agency. The primary is Councilmember Connors, and the alternate is vacant.
I'd like to continue as primary.
Great.
Pearl, do you want to be alternate? Pearl? Would you like to be alternate?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Lee will be the alternate. Okay, South Orange County...
I'm sorry, we just need a vote on that.
Oh, that's right, we have to vote.
Why don't you make the motion?
Excuse me?
Why don't you make the motion?
Oh, I can make the motion.
Okay, I, just, go ahead.
Okay. So I make a motion that Councilmember Connors remain as the existing primary, and Councilmember Pearl Lee as the first alternate.
Okay. A second?
Pearl second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now it gets to Orange County Watershed. Councilmember Moore is the primary, and the alternate is, was me, but now it's not. So that's vacant.
With that, if anyone, unless someone...
I'd like to be alternate on the Watershed. I don't know a lot about it.
And you would like to stay as primary?
Right.
Okay, then we will make Pro Tem McCary the alternate.
Okay, I move that Councilmember Moore continue as primary from the Watershed Management area, and that Councilmember McCary be appointed as alternate.
Have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, the Investment Policy Review Committee. We need to appoint two members of the City Council to serve on a standing Investment Policy Review Committee from January 5th, 2025 through December 31st, 2026, in accordance with Administrative Policy 2.2.
And just to clarify, January 1st, 2025. I think you said January 5th, but January 1st.
Oh, I'm sorry, January 1st, 2025. Okay, so currently, it is myself and Mayor Pro Tem McCary, so I am not going to remain on that for right now.
I'd like to nominate Pearl as one of the...
Okay. I'll serve. And the Councilmember Connors?
Councilmember.
Okay. So I'll move those two for that position. Can I get a second?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good. Okay, and Liaisons to Community Bridge Builder appointments. We need two people. I would like to stay as one, so we need a second person. Right now, it's Mayor Pro Tem McCary. Would you like to stay as the second liaison?
I would, unless someone else wants to.
Okay, so I move that myself and Mayor Pro Tem McCary remain the Liaisons to Community Bridge Builders. A second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, do we have any closed session today?
No, we do not.
No. Okay. So I guess we come to the adjournment, to our next meeting on December 18th, 2024.
I have a comment, ma'am.
Excuse me?
I did have a comment before we adjourned the meeting.
Okay, great.
I just want to congratulate our new, new council member on your election, and our newest council member, Pearl Lee. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. I know that I have a lot to learn, so I'll get busy and do whatever I can, and I'm looking forward to my new venture. Thank you very much for the warm welcome. Thank you very much for the warm welcome.
Thank you for that. We all are, we all are. Anyone else, would you, anyone like to say anything else before we adjourn? Seeing none, we are adjourned till December 18th. Thank you all for being here.